I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:04. May I please raise for the flag slogan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The opening statement according to the agenda. Mr. Hallenbach, can you please call a roll?
Mr. Falcone?
Present.
Mr. Di Stefano is absent. Dr. Capella?
Present.
Ms. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan is absent. Mr. Chaffee is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yep.
Ms. Paula Chana?
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Here. Can I please have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano is absent. Dr. Capella?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan is absent. Ms. Chaffee is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Chana?
Yes.
Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
All right, and we are back live.
Can I please have a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Sorry.
No, you are good.
We were fast.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes, present.
Mr. Di Stefano on the motion to reconvene?
Yes.
Dr. Capella?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Chana?
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 25th executive and regular session?
Move it.
I'll second.
On the motion by Mr. Falcone, seconded by Dr. Capella. Any questions? Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Dr. Capella?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Chana?
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
Can I just move on to the superintendent and HIB report?
Let me go just a little out of order. Lillian, why don't you give the student report for the month of December here heading into the new year? I know Natalia couldn't be with you tonight, but why don't we do that? And then we're going to turn it over to our auditor for a presentation as well.
All right. I have a couple things to say. The high school had a great last week of school showing a lot of spirit. It was a spirit week. We ended the week with a pep rally, teacher superlatives, and choosing Mrs. Tykowski's door as the best decorated. The drama club's production of Puffs was a huge success. I was a part of that. Thank you to everyone who came. It was a whole lot of fun. Our athletic teams have been very successful as well. Our varsity basketball team won against Kidde Tini. Jessica Laguna's representing HopacCon on our girls wrestling team came in first place in a recent tournament.
Wow.
The holiday ensemble for band has been very busy performing all over Sissons County and can be heard first receive on WSUS. That's at 8:00 AM. And the drama club held auditions for the spring musical, The Lightning Thief, and we're all very excited for that. We would love it if everyone who can make it came. It's very fun. Also, congratulations to Dom Amela Natalia, doesn't have a last name, but Natalia Jurena-Roman, and then Natalie, Sophia, and Ashlyn, who were accepted into the North Jersey area band. This is a great accomplishment, and the high school is very proud of them. Lastly, six of the high school's female ninth graders, Talia Parati, Kylie Avales, Annie Palpeir, Lily Tompkins, Adriana Kerusi, and Reagan Grabat, were awarded the Girl Scout Silver Award. Kudos to them and their accomplishments.
Very good.
Thanks, Lillian.
So not only did the high school have a busy week and a busy month of December, but Lilly had a busy month of December as well. From puffs to cheerleading, kicking off the season to being here tonight. So we're thankful to have you as one of our student representatives, proud of our students at the high school and throughout the district for all of their efforts. So thank you for your report this evening, and best wishes to you for a happy new year. And then with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Ray Sarinelli, our auditor from Nishavashi. Ray is going to present the 2324 audit for last school year.
Good evening, everybody. Most of you I remember, so Ray Sarinelli, in case I haven't met you yet, I'm from the audit firm this guy. So the audit book is obviously a very cumbersome book. It has a lot of information in it, a lot of high-level accounting information, schedules and things like that. What I want to do is give you the information that I think is most important to you, which we always start with Schedule C1, which is basically, it is an income statement, but it's basically your forward secretary's report that you see every month. So it's your regular operating budget. It's the closest representation in the audit of what actually happened during the year. There's a few things on here that are a little bit made up that we have to follow from the state of New Jersey, but for the most part, this is what happened in the district during the year. So that's what I always like to talk about. It is a, like I said, income statement. There's revenues, there's expenses, and then your fund balance. Your fund balance is much like retained earnings would be in a business. So it's your indicator of how financially well the district is doing. So just looking at the first page, you have revenues from three different places. You have local revenues, revenues from state sources, and federal sources. So what we're seeing here is the original budget, which is what you voted on, the final budget, so any adjustments that were made during the year will go in that budget transfer column. Then you have your final budget, and then actual, which is what you actually, in this case, collected on the expense side, which you actually spent. So what we're seeing here is on the revenues from local sources, anything in that far-right column that is variance final to actual, if you see a negative there, not so great. That means you didn't collect quite what you budgeted for. So we'll see on the local sources, your unrestricted miscellaneous revenues, some of your rents and royalties, and other restricted miscellaneous revenues have shortfalls of revenue. Over the past several years, in trying to combat the losses in your state sources, you're very resourceful in getting a lot of local revenues. This year came up a little bit short of that because there really is no new revenues for a school district. There's not a lot going on. Over the years, we've been able to sell some assets and do some different things, look at different ways to make some money, which has been very nice. Unfortunately, 2324, not so much. So, you know, a little bit of a shortfall in the local revenues. On the state revenues, we also see a little bit of a shortfall in extraordinary aid, but we also got some stabilization.
Sorry, I have to interrupt you. You have to give me a little bit more information about unrestricted miscellaneous revenues. What does that mean?
So for the most part, that the biggest part of that number is interest.
Interest on accounts?
Yeah, interest on investments. You have cash. Cash is in the bank. You're making interest on that money. That's the majority of that number.
When you say majority, more than 50%?
More than 50%.
The rest of it?
Prior-year refunds would be the other big number, which would be maybe like 15%. And then you're talking miscellaneous revenue. It could be any little thing that comes up, like library funds, could go, all these little tiny pieces of things that we would make up miscellaneous revenue. But the biggest would be interest and prior-year refunds.
Shouldn't we have planned for that? I mean, should we have known that it would not be as much?
So you try and base it on previous years. Your previous years, your unrestricted miscellaneous revenue was close to the number budgeted. So...
Yeah, but that historical isn't always accurate. You know that.
Right.
I mean, you should know in advance that, you know, I'm no longer going to have this piece of property, therefore I'm not going to get the interest from it or the income from it.
Yes, that is correct. But you're also trying to create a balanced budget. So you have to have enough revenue on your revenue side to offset some of your expenses, and sometimes it doesn't quite make it. So yes, I 100% agree with what you're saying, and that's part of the goal for the future, is to be less reliant on revenue, especially based on this year.
We're always reliant on revenue.
I'm a supporter.
All right, yeah, all right. Carry on.
We're working on that. It is a delicate balance, especially for you, because of what's happened on the state side over the last six years.
Of course.
You've been losing $12 million. You have to really, as you're building your budget, put pressure on yourself to try and make as much revenue as possible.
A million, basically a million dollars in the hole here is not a fun thing to do.
No. But it's not necessarily shocking or surprising because of the loss of state aid. We knew there was going to be some shortfalls in revenue, and we knew there was going to be a decline in fund balance until we could get back to a balanced budget. And I think we're close back to a balanced budget because of the initiative you all took several months ago.
Right.
With a larger-than-normal tax increase.
Well...
So, yes.
Well, we had a 4% increase, and then we had a 5.9% increase. But the 5.9% increase is strictly going to be for capital improvements.
Not in the first year.
Not the first year?
Let him go through it, Phil.
So there's a little bit of a lag in when the taxes come in and the payments go out on the debt, because it's not like you just snap your fingers and pay off the debt immediately. So by the time all the wheels turn...
We should do, I understand, we should do well with interest for the first year, for sure.
Do well on interest, and I think we're going to continue to try and look at expenses to keep them low.
Okay, I've had enough. Go ahead. Carry on.
Okay.
Throw it to this guy.
So then there's the state side. So you did get the stabilization aid, and fortunately, the reduction of state aid is done. So has your state aid been estimated? Yes. Do we have to deal with a million-dollar losses going forward? No. So that is a good thing. And then you have a small amount of Medicaid reimbursement, which is a federal aid. So yes, the local sources of revenue did take a hit to your fund balance. I think in trying to make up for state aid, there's hit the fund balance for those local revenue losses. On the expense side, there's about nine pages or so of expenses. I don't like to spend the whole time going through each individual expense, but what I do see is in offsetting some of the revenue losses, as I said, we're trying to look at expenses to not have such injuries in expenses year over year, which means there's more expenses lapsing. So two ways to grow your fund balance is either having revenues more than what you budgeted, or expenses less than what you budgeted. And so what I see is there are a decent amount of expenses that are lapsing, which we haven't had in previous years. The budget was getting tighter and tighter, and, you know, you couldn't budget for as much appropriations as you could expenses, if that makes sense. So we're seeing some good appropriations lapsing because expenses weren't as high as it could be. So if we flip down to page nine of nine, you'll see your fund balance. So a little further than halfway down the page, you see your fund balance July 1st was $6,36,000. That's 802. And the ending fund balance is $4,282,006. So we're on page nine of nine, the actual column, and we're on the fund balance. So a reduction of $1.8 billion because of the revenue issue. Not totally unexpected, because we're trying to keep the district running with the expenses that we have, given that our state aid has been decreasing over the years. I am hopeful now that we're at a point where we can stop being so reliant on fund balance, and the fund balance will level off. Part of the fund balance leveling off will have to be less reliance on those local revenues as well, because they're not where they were for the past several years. So did we take a big hit this year? Yes, absolutely. Am I hopeful for the future that with the tax increase and the balancing of the budget that our fund balance will probably hopefully level off? We might have one more year of a decrease, but we're going to try and level off 3.75 million, which is not a bad place to be. So I think that's the goal. I mean, there's a lot, a lot of variables, especially with the state aid, especially with interest rates and the things that do help us generate fund balance. But I think trying to cut expenses, increase taxes, which is unfortunate, but we're at a place where hopefully the budget is much more balanced than it has been over the past three or four years. So that's kind of the story. And we kind of got into some detail of the revenue. I'm going to talk about the different statutory categories that your fund balances is in. Is there any other questions on revenues and expenses and the fund balance? I'll ask about the revenue. I'm not going to take it as deep as Phil, but 500 grand is a big number. Like, was there something in particular that you guys know of that really hit us hard this year? Where was the bulk of that coming from that we weren't able to anticipate? Like, for example, if we were pulling money in from a building, right, a rental, which we never had, but like, we were, right? And then you know that that rental's going away, you can plan for that the next year and say, okay, this money's going away. But $560,000 is a lot. You know, take the little choppy pieces, but was there anything large? And I'm not going to have a follow-up, but I'm just curious if there was anything large that happened in there.
I would say the biggest part of it is anticipated revenues from interest on investments. The other part of the fund balance that I'm sure Ray is going to go into in a minute is you spent a bunch of money on capital for the roof project next door as well at the high school for the roof renovations. But we are under on anticipated revenues, whether it be alphabet, outside use of facilities. We don't have any other long-term projects in terms of revenues that might be coming in. And our interest, now that we've had two interest rate cuts this year from the Federal Reserve, our interest returns are going to be lower as well. Keep in mind that when our fund balance is larger, you generate more interest on a balance, but as your balance, fund balance gets smaller, there's less money in the savings account to generate interest as well. So with all of that federal money gone, the ESSR fund spent down, you are looking at over multiple years, there was over $2.2 million in federal extra money. All of that money is gone to no longer generate interest as well. So as that spends down, the interest that could be earned from it is gone.
Is this based on, too, that the fact that we had sold assets in the years and we anticipated doing that, or no?
We don't have anything left to sell. You know what I mean? Like, we took Hudson Maxim, we took that over two years. The Cell Tower, we took the revenues for that over two years. So you kind of spread some of those revenues out. Again, those revenues went into your account, they yield interest, but now that they've been gone and paid for one-time things, they're not there to generate those revenues as well. Ray mentioned extraordinary aid came in a little bit lower, right? There's a plus and a minus. When you have, bless you, when you have fewer out-of-district resident students placed in out-of-district placements that are expensive, you get less extraordinary aid back from the state. Two years ago, the state reimbursed, statutorily, they reimburse 100% of certain costs, but because of the state budget, they've only actually budgeted and paid us 85% of what we are entitled to. Two years ago, they actually paid it 100%, and the assumption was, hey, they're going to pay it 100%. Well, last year, guess what they paid at? 85%, right? So some of that is that long-term, you want to guess, you want to balance the budget, you hope that your revenue is hit. And this year, as we go through this year, we already have a spending freeze in place. We have since October. Only essential expenditures. We're not replacing certain staff members that may retire or may go out on leaves of absence. We're trying to find other ways to fill those slots to try and save that revenue. But that's going to be a challenge for next year. And as I've said to the board, and I'll say it to the public, if you haven't read the news, the state's budget is in a precarious position for the next fiscal year. They anticipate being about 2B, B-billion short. That will have an impact on state operations. Ultimately, it will trickle to public ed. You know, we continue to have conversations about hope for flat funding, but plan for a 5% to 10% state aid cut. And so all of those things and trying to make those hurdles will result in, you know, additional cuts to public education, not just here, but across the state. The only saving grace, if there is one, our state aid number has gotten much, much smaller. So a 10% cut to 3 million or 2 million isn't as much as it was years ago when our state aid might have been 9 or 10 million. If there's a silver lining, that might be it. Okay?
We're going to lose less money because we don't have it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Quick, just, I need an explanation. On page eight, the first group of numbers, I understand, these are non-budgeted items, and these are expenses, right? Yeah, 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 yeah. So where does the money come from, then? It's not budgeted.
So remember at the beginning when I said this is the most accurate? It's not the accurate.
Okay.
So the state, at some point in time, makes a billion-dollar, multiple-billion-dollar contribution to the teachers' pension and the newbies. Then they have an actuary calculate which portion of that was what happened. It was just for HopacCon, they do for every state or district in the state. And then they assign you an amount that they are saying it was a contribution on your behalf. So in your financial statements, I have to show it on page one as a revenue and on page eight as an expense. None of that money came through here. You didn't spend $7.6 million on pension. State did for you, but none of that money happened here.
Okay.
But they still force us to show it on the schedule.
I got it.
Because they want credit for the $7.6 million contribution. They need for HopacCon.
Clever.
How nice of them.
Very clever.
So yes, it does look like there's...
So it doesn't look like it's on their books, it's on our books instead?
Yes.
Bastards.
Yep.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So we'll go through the categories quickly on what the different categories of fund balance you can have. So kind of towards the middle of that grouping, towards the bottom, you have capital reserve, maintenance reserve, and unemployment compensation reserve. So capital reserve is used for capital-type items. You can utilize that through the budget, or you can utilize it by resolution during the year. You make withdrawal. That actually happened last year. You did a withdrawal from capital reserve, sent that money over to be spent on roofs. Maintenance reserve is very similar to capital reserve. It can be withdrawn through the budget or withdrawn by resolution. That is where maintenance-type needs, not big capital-type items. And then unemployment is a reserve held for future unemployment claims. Hopefully, you don't need it, but it's there for a reason. Then below that, you have your assigned fund balance, which you have year-end encumbrances, and then you have a sudden fund balance designated for subsequent year's expenditures. The year-end encumbrances are very similar to accounts payable. They're expenses that happened towards the end of the year that haven't been paid for yet. You're still holding that money, which is why we set aside the fund balance to pay for those items in the current fiscal year that you're in, the '24-'25 year. And then the designated-for-subsequent-years-assigned-fund-balance, and the numbers above that, the excess surplus, that's your fund balance that you use to balance the budget. And over the years, which is kind of why we're seeing the drawdown of these funds, we've been utilizing that fund balance. It got much bigger during COVID. COVID, you know, school didn't really operate normally, so fund balance grew because there wasn't a lot of expenses. And that school's back in session, and your state aid is about half of what it was before COVID. We were kind of relying on that money and allowing time for the budget to get back to balance. So $732,000 was used from this budget, and then from last year's budget, there was $711,222. $128,000 will be used in the '25-'26 year. That was generated this year. So excess surplus is kind of on a two-year rolling cycle. The designated-for-subsequent-years expenditures is money that you have from the end of this year. Any question on those things? That's kind of like the most complicated part of a school board audit. Seven years, I haven't been able to understand it. One is a one-year cycle, one is on a two-year cycle, but it's basically like a savings account. You're using your own money to pay for your expenses. Then the last thing is your unassigned fund balance. You're allowed 2% of your operation with some minor adjustments is what's allowed to be held as unassigned fund balance. That's, you know, held for cash flow purposes. You can't withdraw from that money, but it's there as cash flow, you know, hopefully generating interest and creating more revenue. So, you know, overall, I think you guys understand where we're at. The revenues, we're a little too over-reliant on revenues this year. We need to come down on that, balance the budget a little bit better. Along with that, we're going to have to try and reduce expenses to meet that reduction of revenue. You know, hopefully, the fund balance is kind of stabilizing here as we get closer to a more balanced budget. That's general thought. Any other questions on that? So then the next thing I usually go through is Schedule G2. That is an income statement also, but that's an income statement for your co-op. Service program is on there too, but usually the $60 million fund catches people's eyes before the... So your co-op generated $60,441,000 worth of revenue and spent $59,793. Also there, you see the interest income really took off. There's almost, there's $450,000 of interest earning in the co-op. Now, the most important thing to remember about the co-op is we're not the owners of the co-op. The co-op is the owner of the co-op, so you cannot use that money for the HopacCon Board of Education. So even though it does have a robust fund balance of $3.8 million, those ones need to be reinvested back into the co-op. My understanding is that you're hiring some people in accounting there, which has always been my recommendation. If a business were running with this type of revenue, it would have a lot of people in the accounting department. So I'm pleased to see that you're hiring people there, investing in the co-op to make sure that the finances are handled correctly. I think if you could hire 100 more bus drivers, you probably would, but there's just not a lot of bus drivers out there. So I'm glad to see the reinvestment in the co-op. It's doing very well. It's financially stable, and that's a very good thing. Any questions on the co-op? The next schedule that we're going to look at is Schedule F1. This is the analysis of the capital project. So the reason I included this is it's new this year. We haven't done a capital project in a while. I think it's important to note that you're getting money from state aid on this in the form of a RODA grant or SDA grant. So that project, obviously, ongoing, maybe finished at this point, but as of 6:30, ongoing. So just to give you an idea of what's going on with that project. Then the last schedule we're going to look at is the schedule of your recommendations. There's one recommendation, fixed assets. It's been there for a couple of years. Jeff and I have talked about it, how to remediate that. There's already a plan in place to remediate that issue. Little bit of confusion from the fixed asset appraisal company. They don't always necessarily pay close attention to the accounting standard. They feel that it's not important. They always look at the insurance values and things of that nature, which are very important, but sometimes the accounting standard isn't very important to them. They don't always update their information timely. So I think there's some corrective action there that's going to be taken. You know, when I look at this schedule, when I started with you guys in 2019, you had 22 recommendations on this page. And now there's one, and I'm fairly certain there will be zero next year unless something changes. So a lot of improvement in the finance office. Unfortunately, that's not exactly correlating into your fund balance health, kind of out of your control because of the state aid loss, but things are running smoothly in the finance department, in the finance department of the co-op. You know, things are good there, which is a very good thing. If you had the money, it would be handled very well. Hopefully, we're getting back to a more balanced budget, less reliant on some of those revenues, cut some costs, and in a couple of years, I'll only have good news for you. It's not bad.
So the only gig we have from this particular order is just this fixed asset issue, right?
Yes.
We talked about this.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Great.
Thank you.
That is my report.
The best, I think.
To your point, less reliant on revenues is going to be very important for the future. But for this year, we're wrapped.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. I appreciate it.
Yep.
With that, before we approve the superintendent's report, I do need to give you the HIB report for the month real quick for the month of November on second reading. We had three reported HIB incidents. On second reading, we had three reported HIB incidents. One of those was a confirmed HIB. Two of those were code of conduct. We discussed those in exec session again, and sustained all three of those. For the month of December, we have again three reported allegations of HIB. Two were deemed to be HIBs. One was deemed to be a code of conduct violation. We will review those HIBs again at our January regular board meeting for approval on second reading as well. That concludes the superintendent's report for the month of December. Any questions on that before we get a motion and a second to approve?
Can I please have a motion to approve number seven?
Move it.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Falcone, second by Ms. Polichina. Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano?
Yes.
Dr. Capella?
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee's absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Polichina?
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
Moving on to acknowledgement and correspondence, a couple of awards. One?
We do. Congratulations to our Students of the Month at HOPEACOM Middle School for their outstanding performance in November, as well as a congratulations to Leila Gonzalez on receiving the Sussex County Superintendent's Roundtable Award for the school year. Ms. Martinez High School Principal, Leila, and her family will be attending a reception with the Sussex County Superintendent's Group later in the spring for her recognition. So, congratulations to Leila on her outstanding achievements.
Great. And is there anyone from a parent-teacher organization who would like to give a report? At this time, we're open to public comment. No one has signed in. Is anyone in the public like to speak? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to move the rest of the agenda, please?
Wait, move it.
Eleven through...
I'll second Phil's move.
Fifteen?
Fifteen?
Fifteen. So, you second?
Phil moved it, I second.
Any discussion on the rest of the agenda?
All right, so 11 through 15 on the motion by Mr. DiStefano, seconded by Mr. Falcone. Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano?
Yes.
Dr. Capella?
Yes, except abstaining to 13B.
Yes, with an extension 13B. Thank you. Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. Polichina?
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone like to make a board member comment besides Scott?
It's in, nobody's saying something.
Flor's yours.
It's you.
Charlie Rose, buddy.
I'll be brief, but it's my last meeting, so maybe I can say something.
Say a farewell to her.
Right.
I guess a couple...
The last meeting for the, what time?
No, for real this time, for real.
Get the music ready.
I guess just a couple of quick things to you guys, to my peers. Number one, I think when you, when you listen to what Ray just said, going from 22 problems to one, which is essentially some technicality that we just have to put on a spreadsheet, that's tremendous. That is tremendous. So, I think that there's a lot of good momentum here. I remember when, when I got on the board for the first time, the guy that was one of the big offices for me to get on the board was Rob Nicholson. And I remember his last meeting, he said, "I'm really glad that I'm leaving HOPEACOM in a better place than I found it." So, I'm not going to steal his line, but I'm going to, I will say that there has been tremendous improvement from the time that I got here. I don't think I had anything to do with it, right? But I think that there's some great people in this district, and things are really progressing in the right direction, and that's exciting. The other thing I'll say is, after seven years, you know, this is a, this is a good group up here, so keep doing what you're doing, keep the momentum going, and stay invested in this. And when you get burnt out, you know, recruit new people to do it that will spend the time and energy. Then the last thing, I've been through four, four, four superintendents in seven years, and I think that each one of them had their own style, each one of them had their own characteristics. I have not seen anyone have a command of a district the way Jeff has. And that includes Art, who I loved. If you listened to me last year, I can't say enough good things about Art. But, but Jeff, I mean, you can ask, you can ask Jeff how Mars affects the HOPEACOM school district, and he'll have some kind of answer for you that makes a lot of sense. So, I think that's exciting too, and I give you a lot of credit for that. And, you know, the guy's been, you know, blood and guts to this district for a long time, and we have good leadership here. So, thank you, guys, and good luck to everybody going forward, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And thanks, Scott, from all of us.
Good service.
You really have been a driving force on the board, and even though you won't be here, you'll be on the sidelines and in the audience.
So about that one.
That's right.
Thanks.
Make us smile.
I just want to close with, we have a couple of goals for this year, and I feel like we, it's good to revisit them, especially going into the new year. And, you know, we've already made progress, but our first goal was to implement a comprehensive data-driven instructional model throughout the whole schools. And I know Matt has been working on that with the staff, to target chronic absenteeism, which, you know, is really important. If kids aren't here, they aren't learning. And lastly, is to strategically allocate funds for ongoing maintenance and improve our school facilities, which we've been making progress. Mr. Hallenbach shared that our bonds have been, what's the right term?
Yeah, we just sold and closed down those bonds Friday.
Right.